Good afternoon. This is the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is now one oh three P M on the thirteenth of December twenty twenty three. The meeting is now called to order.
I'll repeat that. It is now one oh three P M on the thirteenth of December twenty twenty three. The meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is called to order. Should we do the roll call?
Here.
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 Present.
Information on participating in today's meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at icertechmontray.org. We ask attendees to keep phones and devices muted. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Focus. Hey, next. We have five items on the consent agenda. The meeting of approval of minutes. And then the informational reports, receiving reports of the annual statistics, the library museum director's activity, the financial report, and the statistical report. Does anybody want to have any discussion of that or any of the items?
Um, I just, I just had a couple of either questions or comments to make about the statistical report, but I don't want to make any changes or anything.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. We can, we can do that if you just have comments.
So it seems like there's a wealth of information and.
Seems like there's a lot of information in here, and I think it's useful to compare it with other libraries, which you may do anyway. I know in the past we did like a benchmarking report and it was very time consuming and you don't have enough employees to do that. But I was wondering if you, if you, when you get, you get a big report of everybody's stuff, right? Or.
Let me turn this on. So yes, we do. We get an annual report. So the data for this twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three is not out as a final report for the state on the California State Library where they put everything out onto an Excel spreadsheet. But what I've done in the past is reached out directly to library directors of those other, of other systems where we've done comparisons to ask for their data. So I can either ask for the data or log into the California State Library portal and see if they have those specific reports up to do that because on the California State Library portal, you could run a report for a comparison based on first specific big. Either specific libraries or specific numbers. So we could do that.
So you, you may not know this, but a couple of years ago, when, when we did this, we did a benchmarking report where we actually identified seven or eight libraries that were our peers. But you know, we looked at size, we looked at the holdings, we looked at all sorts of things like that. And so did a report on the comparison with those particular libraries. I'm sure that's in the archives somewhere or we could get it to you. And I thought maybe it would be interesting for you and for the rest of us at some point in the future to look at that and see where we stand. You know, budget wise, employee wise, because we, the last time we looked at it was way pre pandemic. And now to look at the post pandemic, it might give us some interesting information about where we are compared to everybody else.
And I have read that report several times. And what I can say is, from that list, I believe the top of my head, only one of the libraries actually had a bookmobile on that site out of other ones. So there are some things which are comparisons and other parts which are not direct comparisons. Last time I actually reran that data last year at the end of the, you know, at the end of the California State Library report. So I would need to rerun it for this year. I didn't present it, but I was rerunning it from my own data. Those libraries did see it drop during the pandemic, but have recovered towards the total number of operating hours and stuff. So those, those have been pretty much static, but we would want to go back and look at, are those still the comparison libraries? What do we actually want to compare and if there's anything else, but I could run over a report if the board wanted and present on that in the comparison from the prior report and an update to this current, this, this past fiscal year.
Yeah, I think at some point it would be interesting to, to see that and to know that. You know, part of it is, it was not just the libraries themselves, but kind of the communities that they sat in. You know, it wasn't multi branch. We didn't look at multi branch. We looked at communities about the same size as we were and approximately the same kind of. But anyway.
Marcia, I think of the five of us, you and I were the only ones on the board when that previous research was done. And I remember it happening and you know, there were half a dozen other libraries that were seen as being comparable in size and number of holdings and city population and that kind of thing. Pardon me. What I don't remember though, is seeing it presented using this template from the state.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well.
I mean, some of the data may have been pulled out of it, but I don't remember it presented in this, what is it, like almost ten pages long or more? A template that was provided by the, the state public library survey. This, I don't, I don't remember seeing it given to us in this format.
If I could respond to that, we, we whittled it down. I mean, it's an enormous dataset. So we had, there was an ad hoc committee, I think it was Jim and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We spent a lot of time and we talked to the board about it, about whittling down the relevant fields because otherwise it would have been, you know, would have taken up this whole wall here. So we look, I mean, the data is out there like that, but we didn't think it was very useful to.
Oh, that's fine. Just this, this template, the format that I see visually was, was new to what not familiar, let's just say. It might be not new and I've forgotten it, but it wasn't familiar to me. So what you're saying is you got this and then you extracted it and probably what you provided the board was more of a synthesis or synopsis of it, right?
I think what happens is, it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you fill out this form and then the library people aggregate it and come up with this giant thing and send it back. And we had, I don't know, hundreds of fields. And I remember we whittled it down to seventy five or something like that, you know, because a lot of it was rate. And then we added some actually ratio of expenditure in books per, you know, per cardholder kind of things that we thought would be useful and communicated with the other live, our comparable libraries to get that stuff. But I, I just want to add that we don't want, I'm not asking you to spend a whole lot of time doing this. You know, you don't have the staff to do that, but just some kind of comparison that will enable us to be telling the truth when we say we don't have as many resources as everybody.
Compared to what?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. We want to have data to back up what we're saying.
And I, I can, yeah, I guess begun that. This is the full report that David and I submitted and I did the financial side and David did a lot of statistics side for pretty much all the statistics side. And so the, the libraries before were Benicia, Calabasas, Coronado, Los Gatos, Monrovia, South Pasadena and Monterey Public. So that was the, those were the libraries that the study was done on. And from what I recall from looking at Libpass, which is the website where aggregates all the data for the California State Library. That's the portal that we use. A lot of the reports on here are based on specific reports that were ran from Libpass. So rather than just using all of the data and like combing through it, there was specific data where you look at usage per capita or you, you know, you run through specific kind of fields and you run a report based on it. So like I said, you know, if we want to, it won't be the same, like a benchmarking study, like, you know, the, with the synopsis and and unless you spend more time to do that research and having people really looking at the data and interpreting it, but there can be like, if you wanted the data to be reported and then discussed, that is something we could report on the data and I would be able to look at either Libpass or work directly with the library directors to see their data. The data would be from that, you know, from the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year submission from this past.
That would be great. Thank you.
I'll also add, and just to support what Brian was, was saying, and when we went through this process, as you, you may recall, trustee petty and trustee Moreau. We, we were lucky to have Jim Thompson as a trustee and he spent considerable time identifying and working with the, the board on what are the key metrics that are most important to the library, to the board? And what are the comparator agencies that we all agree Monterey Public can compare to? Brian listed each of them and it was deliberately, those were deliberately chosen because they only had one or two branches, the, some, not all, they didn't all have bookmobiles, but they all were city run as an example. So they all relied, for example, on the general fund dollars and allocation to the library from that. But as, as Brian said, the data was, it's not readily, all those data points aren't readily available on the, on the state library's website. It required a significant amount of follow through and contacting the library directors directly for, for the data and some manual number crunching that, that I know Jim had to go through to, to get those data sets. But to, but to your point as well, trustee Moreau, these benchmarks are helpful ways to advocate, and this is I know later on, on the agenda, on, on, and to be able to see how is Monterey Public Library funded compared to other comparable agencies? How is staffing compared to other comparable agencies? We go through the same process. Where the city is going through a compensation study, total compensation study right now. And we have a list of what are the agencies geographically and size and in terms of service delivery that are comparable to Monterey. We, we can't compare ourselves necessarily to Carmel by the sea, right? Because they're, they're much smaller. So anyway, that, I wanted to add a little bit more context and background and support.
And, and so my suggestion, just to clarify, was not to go do that whole analysis over again, but just to take a sort of bird's eye look and say, you know, with the things that are readily available and say, how do we look compared to everybody else after what we've all been through?
Jenny, has something?
Um, well, I had a question for Brian about the source. Is it available? The state library database, is that available to like us? Or is it only available to the participating libraries?
Yes. If you go on your agenda packet at the bottom at page six, that's the, the website is ca dot counting opinions dot com.
Is that packet page six?
At the beginning of that discussion right there and on the, right, right before it says attachment, annual statistical report, F Y twenty two, two thousand and twenty three. But that site is available on the California State Library report, but they don't have the ability for you to, you could download a large Excel document that has every public library in California and download, or just download specific ones that you want and you could access it to itself or download it as a PDF. But if you want to go through, or actually, I'll take that back. There are times when you could do specific reports on counting opinions and do that, but I don't believe that they have uploaded the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three data yet. They probably have the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two dataset on there. Now I can possibly access that. So I mean, I can look through on the backend on the kind of the admin type of side where we submit to see if I have access to the other libraries to pull those datas, like a poll of reports from everybody.
Because it's, it's been a long time since I was at MOBAC, twenty years or more, but we used to also have very detailed information about the member libraries that included not only public libraries, but other libraries in our area. So that was, that's another way of looking at it. I mean, yes, we can't compare ourselves to Carmel, but if everyone else in the county has, or the area has a certain situation and they bounce back better than we have, that would be good to know too.
Yes. So I can, I can just say on this right now, like you can go through here. I just plugged in real quick and they have all data to twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two on the public facing site right now. Trend data for the five, five or 10 years.
Is that link you just identified?
Yeah. Facilities and hours, programs, collections, staffing, tech resources, where you can pull reports based on that, but they are a year behind because they, it takes some time to put all of that data in there. There is a California State Library also website that have covers other things, which is like L I P C, which is another thing for our grants, which is local income per capita, which does not put in no anything regarding the cost of living because they, they basically say across the state of California, you know, they don't adjust for it's one of the highest cost of living here in Monterey. They just say how much people make per capita. So the local L I P C allows us, when we're applying for grants, basically states you are in this benchmark, you're in this criteria. But a lot of those different data points or data points that I use later on in the, in the reports, those come from the California State Library where they've used different GIS data or different, different data points throughout. So you'll find more on the California State Library website if you're looking at things through MOBAC and other areas.
Well, I think, I mean, from my point of view, I'm not particularly interested in all the data that's been compiled in these reports relative to how many people live in the city and what the average income is and all that kind of stuff. In and of themselves, those data, pieces of data, what I would be interested in, and we have discussed it, the board frequently or made reference to in the board, how much funding from the city is received by the library relative to the size of library and the size of the library needs to be in accordance with like the population and the number of visitors and things like that. I mean, if we only had two visitors a day, we wouldn't need so many staff, but we have way more than that. So we need way more staff. And so there are some specific questions like, how much is the city providing? How many dollars per, say Monterey city resident? And compare that to what other cities of comparable size are receiving in terms of city funding? Because like you said, those, those six or seven that you mentioned from before, they're all city libraries and so are we. So you know, that's the kind of data that I would like to be able to receive or pull out myself. And I don't really care about how many square miles are in the city of Monterey or how many, you know, because, because that's demographic. What I'd like to know is what, what funding is being received specifically by the library for, I guess, like per capita? And, and, and other things like that. Yeah.
And so that's on the state library data report.
Okay.
And so like I was saying, it's just there a year.
This link that you mentioned?
Yes. If you go in there, you can go to income and expenditures and get an Excel data sheet, which is going to tell you local per capita from state government, from federal government, from, you know, different things. And we'll break that down for you.
Now, I don't downloaded this agenda packet and I can't find, there was, when I looked at it on my computer at home, there was a page which I thought followed this state report we're talking about, but I can't find it. It listed a whole bunch of libraries in tiny print and it was sort of like orangey, yellow color.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's another one from the state and I can't find it in my download of the whole thing, of the whole. Yeah.
Of the, uh, download, last page of what?
It's packet.
Oh, the whole packet. Oh, yes. I see it now. Okay. I was looking at the last page of this report and what I highlighted and they, they identify a whole slew. It looks like what about fifty libraries almost. And they're identified anywhere from poor to excellent. I only found one that was labeled poor and we're in the next lowest category. For whatever reasons, being in the next last, next to the lowest category doesn't please me. And I think they're talking about the quality of the physical structure on this chart.
Self identify, by the way.
So, well.
Yeah.
But you self identify based on the information you're given. At any rate, I, I, I guess I'm just looking at that and saying, oh geez, I want to draw a black line through where it says Monterey Public Library and not be listed in that next to the bottom group or only one above the one and only that's rated as poor. So this, this is, I think, good data for actually the discussion that's later on in our agenda today, talking about how the board can be active and promoting the library instead of just sitting back and once a month talking about it. So that's my three cents.
Well, I'd like to repeat, I have time set up with Brian twice a month. And if you have any specifics that you'd like to talk about, feel free to tell me and I'll let you have part of my time if necessary. So.
Was that the first and third Wednesday?
First and third Wednesday at eleven o'clock. Do let me know and I'll let Brian, Brian know and we'll work it out. So that way I can go into more detail and specifics and things like that.
Got it. Got it.
Do you need a motion to approve items?
I was going to come to that. Yes. Right. Great. Are there any, if there are no more questions, then let's have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second, okay. The consent agenda is consent items are approved. And now we come to the main part. Before that, before that, let's see, we have public, general public comments. Public may speak to any item that is not on the agenda and that is within the purview of the city of Monterey. Are there any? Nobody on Zoom, nobody. All right. The lone bicycle rider, but nobody there.
It's Marsha, I know.
Okay. So then I don't have to do this. Public appearance, nobody's here, nobody's on Zoom, so we'll skip that. And then we come to the crux of the thing, this item six. I sent a message to Nat. I'm glad to see he's able to come here. So that he would be a very important person to invite for contribution. I sent him the items. So thanks for coming, Matt. And we're going to discuss advocacy for Monterey Public Library. The little background of that is that on the fifteenth of November, when my regularly scheduled time with Brian, Janie and Marsha took my place, I helped by staying out and they discussed, they discussed the advocacy part. And so now we're going to talk about it. So Brian, if you'd like to introduce that and.
Sure. Yeah. So thank you, Chair Joshi. As the different trustees have mentioned over time, the need to basically increase library operating hours and request to increase library staffing and to bring this up for a discussion at a at a trustee meeting, we brought this up here today. So we're looking at some of the areas to focus on for strategy, including our messaging, what is the strategy for this messaging and also what are the needs here in the community? The topics brought up by trustee Silveira and trustee Moreau of staffing models for the library. The funding sources and budget priorities, our collections budget, the value of library to the community, grants available for public libraries and the implementation of group four facility master plan. So with that, the trustees at the score collection budgets over from the general fund over the past ten years, I've put that into the the report over that you have with you, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. We did see an increase of roughly $20,000 and went from what, and I put in our budget allocation and our expenses at this time. So you'll see the year to date at this time, we've spent forty six thousand eight sixty five so far in our collection budget. Now, the collection budget does include print and electronic. Just to clarify. So twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three was eighty five thousand three twenty five. We spent eighty five thousand two thirty seven. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two was during the pandemic. That was the budget with sixty four thousand. We spent seventy thousand fifteen. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one was forty seven thousand nine eighty six. That was also during the pandemic. So four thousand six fifty eight spent on the general fund is fairly low. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty was one twenty seven eight ninety and that was pretty consistent from the fiscal years twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. So for those four fiscal years, the the collection budget was around one hundred and twenty, around one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. The expenses exceeded that every single year. So I wasn't here at that time. So I'm not sure why the expenses were higher on that or, you know, the comparison. And then twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, there was a large overage in expenses on the collection budget because you'll see that the budget allocation was one fifty one, but they spent two hundred and thirteen thousand. I'm not sure if that was implementation of some different ebooks and different strategies that that is a pretty large variance. And then twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen was one sixteen and the expenses were one forty eight thousand. As well, just pulling a report on kind of the facilities. And as trustee Petty had mentioned earlier about the conditions and the poor, fair, good, and those, those kinds of things on that report. Harrison Memorial Library is listed as poor. That's our Carmel's library. Last remodel nineteen forty eight, I believe they're going through a planning session right now for their libraries. But that is also the oldest library here in this Senate district. So I pulled the data based on Senate District Seventeen. This from the California State Library Report. This is, the report was, the reason this port was created was for the building forward grant project that the state allocated money for. And the state allocated money for the prior fiscal years. And then this fiscal year, we were not accepted based on our income per capita. We did not have a poverty level high enough for where we had, because of where I say that the state in my mind, I think it's a problem with that where they don't adjust for sort of the cost of housing, you know, the different things, putting in account, number of renters, different, different metrics that are not in the, just an income per capita, which you don't see there. So they approved a number of projects and also I believe the funding was decreased in the amount of, because of the large state deficit that's happening. There's a, there's a huge state deficit. So building forward was decreased in terms of the amount of money that they were offering. But this project right here, at least these data, there's a website on the state library report where you can pull data for the entire state of all the different libraries and see what, where they are based on G I S data. But it's all pretty much twenty nineteen. And so it's pre pandemic data and then I mentioned that because the age of facilities in Senate District Seventeen, the ten oldest in twenty nineteen Carmel by the Sea, a number are here in San, or in San Luis Obispo. They have some of the older libraries in the area. But Live Oak Branch was remodeled or is in the process of remodeling. Garfield Park Branch and Santa Cruz also remodeling. They had a, a, a funding measure for all the Santa Cruz public libraries. Pacific Grove Public Library was modeled and yeah, and I believe in Felton Branch Library as well from Santa Cruz. So that's where, where you'll notice in the current twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four age of facilities, there is no report. So I had to just pull that. Basically pull the data off of the website from that list and the sites that moved up. As we were at, now basically we're tied with Los Osos at eight or nine. So depending how you look at it, we are either five or six, what kind of time that's based. San Ardo Branch, Monterey County.
That's the older data though.
Well, this week, I just mean it's nineteen eighty three. Thank you. We're tied for nineteen eighty three, nine, eight or nine. And so for us would be either five or six for the current data. We could be tied because we're at.
Yeah. The current data shows us the sixth oldest, whereas we were only the ninth oldest before.
We were ninth or eighth is what I'm saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because, because it's nineteen eighty three, we're still nineteen eighty three.
And Pacific Grove was remodeled in twenty twenty.
Right. So that's where Pacific Grove has moved out. So the, the branches that have moved up into the area into the top ten are San Ardo, which is Monterey County nineteen eighty six, Prunedale nineteen eighty eight, and then two others from San Luis Obispo. So really San Luis Obispo has six of the top ten oldest libraries. So they have a lot of quite old libraries. Then you're moving into the nineteen nineties at that. So that's just to show the kind of the age of the last remodel of a facility that's coming in here. And then, yeah, of course there's the attachment just with the list. And I'm hoping that the state library does update these lists about facility conditions, because I think these are really helpful for the state and the state legislators, state assembly, state senate to see these things. Cause if there are appropriations and earmarks available, that's another great funding source for renovations of libraries.
Did you say it was self-reported, the condition of the building?
Yeah. So self-reported and the total amount, because they're basically how much they, they ask things like, what's the, when was the last, when was the, when was your library built? When was the year of your last remodel? What is your condition? What is your database, database speed for your internet? And they asked like age of network cabling and they ask specific questions about that. And then, so they did that report with the self-assessment so that they could give that to the state legislature to appropriate funding for building forward projects to say these number of buildings are listed as poor. These number of buildings are listed as fair, acceptable and that going forward.
But the, the, these two lists in the chart you were talking about on, what is it, packet page twenty eight? They're interesting. On the other hand, I have no idea how the size of the served population or any of that stuff compares within the ten libraries in each of those two lists. And what I do see is that it's been forty years, looking at the dates there since any remodeling was done to the, to the Monterey library. And ones that remodeled sooner, I mean, more recently or after a shorter period of time. We don't know why. I mean, you remodel because you need it and you need it because you have a lot of users or something like that, right? A library could have been remodeled because there was an earthquake and three of the four walls fell down. And so when they did it, it was a remodel, right? And it had nothing to do with the aging of the building, whereas ours, I think, is primarily due to the aging of the ability and the structure that is getting older and older. It's more dangerous. It becomes more of a, a safety hazard as it gets older and older. Things like the elevator get, become inadequate because they're just so old and you know, like I say, this is interesting, but how important that forty years is in the case of Monterey depends on what's happened during those forty years and what the needs, how the needs have changed. And whether the funding that we're getting has kept up with whatever replacements, remodels, or whatever you want to call them to meet the increased needs. And, and, and so I think it's those wider range of pieces of information specific to Monterey, not necessarily relative to Los Osos, for example, that should guide our requests and recommendations from the board level.
I could, well, let me add this part on there, which is that or, for example, Monterey is a city that has not seen a huge amount of growth in terms of population growth in the last forty years. And if you're looking at this district map in here, where you see a number of cities within these districts where you're to look at Morgan Hill, Gilroy. Yeah, you know, the cities in the past forty years, like all that data, those are completely expense, you know, huge expansions. So those, those libraries right there in terms of like when they were built, when they were expanded. And also funding sources for different areas that are going to be on there. Because here in Senate District Seventeen, you are looking at, you know, the southern part, very southern tip of kind of Santa Clara County, but then, you know, Santa Cruz County and Monterey County and Marina, look at the, the growth of Marina in the past forty years. So some of these areas, it's hard to compare on our side, like why a library was rebuilt. But I would say the majority of libraries have not been rebuilt, just based on my knowledge due to fire, earthquake, anything like that, besides Paradise and some other libraries that have been reasonably damaged. And that's where the state library has come in, in the California State Legislature has came into appropriate funding specifically for that purpose. Because in two thousand, around two thousand nine, two thousand ten was when the last state library bonds were available for building replacement libraries. My past library system actually did have a new library, was one of the very last libraries built off of state dedicated funds for libraries. But since that time, there have not been steady dedicated funds for that, for that purpose. But if you were to look at it, you know, you could look at it and pull the, the data off of District Seventeen. But because this is the central coast, there are not a lot of cities that are going to be comparable in terms of size and service to Monterey.
And, and when you say compared to the size of Monterey, I mean, we've, I, including myself, I've made reference to, well, how many people live here? And how does that relate to dollars per person spent? But really, we have noted over and over again for years how a large number of the users of the Monterey library are not Monterey city residents. And they come from other nearby cities. So I think number of users of the library is a more valid number to look at when you're saying, well, how much do we need to adequately run this library? Not how many people live in Monterey so much? Because we have noted in our data that we've received in these reports for many years has supported the fact that there are a lot of people coming to this library, particularly kids who are not Monterey residents. So we can't just go by the number of Monterey residents. I don't think we need to look at.
Yeah.
The population is the user population.
The other thing I'm concerned about too is have we done any studies on new patterns of use? Because what a library was forty years ago is real different from what a library is nowadays, what people's expectations and needs are. And based on those needs, I, I mean, you know, I'm a tech person. And this library was never designed or built with the infrastructure necessary to support some of the things the newer modern libraries do, which I'm sure, you know, our patrons need and want. Have we done any kind of user needs assessment? And folded that in to our game plan of what we're going to do in the future as far as remodeling, building new, whatever. Is that something I, I really think we're going to be missing the boat if we don't look at and think about how the library is being used, how it should be organized or constructed. I, I, I know when I worked at Hart Allen, where we were building a new library, we went around and looked at patterns of use and did focus groups. And because the way the original library was constructed, it was, you know, the old days, we had books, we had shelves, we had index cards. And now students needed electronic databases. They needed computers to get in and access that. They expected to have access to software to support their needs. And that meant when we constructed the new library, it had big implications for how you would construct a floor to be able to pull wiring underneath and, and set up your networking. And I'm, I'm afraid if we don't hold in that aspect of how people expect the library to support them, we're kind of missing the boat.
And I, I should add a couple of things on this. One is that we're not unique in terms of us having a an external population. If you go to P G, the number of people that are Monterey residents that use P G library are very high. The people that use Monterey County Free Library that live, if they use like the seaside library that live in Monterey, that's also very high. So it's, it's pretty comparable when I've reached out to those libraries in terms of like our, yes, we have fifty percent of our users come from outside Monterey, but so do they. And if you were to go to a city like San Francisco, San Jose, Los Angeles, San Diego, people get library cards from all throughout the state because the library card is even extends your access to resources. But I think the state uses that, when, when we look at these datas on here, the state really focuses on who lives in your service area because they know people have multiple cards. I probably have ten or twelve library cards, honestly. You know, because I saw some of them I need to update. But what I mean, when I was saying, when I was talking about comparable, I'm talking about also the physical footprint and the size, which is the square foot per capita in terms of us having, you know, roughly twenty nine to thirty thousand residents and having about one square foot per capita on our library when averages are just go from like point five to point six five square foot per capita. So we're actually on that higher end. If you look at it at the state level. So if we looked at just this, this chart of comparable libraries. And when we're asking earlier about, you know, the age of those facilities in that top ten, well, South County or Los Osos are the size of probably two thousand square. They're not comparable at all, right? The, the cost to compare, like the cost to do something on that library is not going to be nearly the same as doing something at Monterey Public Library. And as trustee Bogut, as you're mentioning, like upgrading the facility, upgrading the facility that is twenty nine thousand, thirty thousand square foot and raising, you know, putting in a floating floor and putting in additional bandwidth to have it as, run as an emergency operations center when we have closed was, when roads are closed and people need access to, you know, charge their devices and do these kinds of things. Those kinds of things matter when we have kind of continuing storms throughout the area. So. Uh, but Nat, I don't know if you want to talk about any kind of city process. But Nat, I don't know if you want to talk about any kind of city process coming up?
Absolutely. You know, a couple of notes I've, I've been taking in, this has been very helpful feedback, you know, to echo what, what Brian mentioned when it comes to, you look at the list of, of the libraries, you obviously, you, the idea that many of these libraries that have been remodeled are in high-growth areas such as Morgan Hill. The, the other piece to that, in addition to the smaller communities like Parkfield and, you know, Shell Beach, which is a branch outside of Morro Bay or Cambria, is also where does the funding source come from? And my, you know, I've, I've been mentioning you for years and we've, we've talked about this, that our neighbors in Santa Cruz passed a parcel tax. A number of years ago, it was a, I have my, my notes here. This parcel tax that, let me take a quick moment, Measure S passed in twenty sixteen with seventy percent affirmative vote. And it's a forty-nine dollars and fifty cents per residential unit and eighty-six dollars per agricultural, commercial, industrial, and recreational partial, parcel that is dedicated to library facilities in Santa Cruz County. And because of that, and it's a thirty-year parcel tax that has supported many large library remodels and projects in Santa Cruz County. And, and that's one of the reasons why Santa Cruz is able to go through a remodel, Aptos, Scotts Valley, Boulder Creek, Felton. These are just some examples in, compared to the list that we have. Here in, here in Monterey County, there is, there is no parcel tax and for Pacific Grove, Carmel, City of Monterey relies on city funding to, to support the cost of any renovation or, or other, other major improvements, remodel for a library in, in the county and some of the other areas such as Marina and, and Seaside. It's a combination of both the city that often runs the, that owns the facility, but the library, the county library system that operates the library. So it's a partnership, obviously. For, for us, I, I think one of the big challenges, and it has been, why there, the, the project hasn't, I mean, I think you, you all are very familiar with the effects of the COVID- nineteen pandemic and how, you know, shortly after the Library Board approved the facility study, we went into economic turmoil, if you will, not to be too overly dramatic, but having, yeah, freefall and in order to stave off bankruptcy, which we projected would take place in October of twenty twenty, we end up cutting cutting services drastically. And, and we are working our way to rebuild, you know, obviously we haven't been able to, and, and this is part of the conversation, you know, when, when can we expand library hours? What does the, the long-term outlook look like for city facilities as a whole? And where does the Monterey Public Library fall within all of those priorities? So this is a long way of saying, we, over the next several months, as we build the budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we'll be having conversations with our city council, but as well as with the community as a whole on what are the community priorities for the city's budget? Both in the operations side as well as on the capital side, because we know we have needs on both. The operational side funds the staff who provide services to the community, whether that's police officers, firefighters, recreation professionals, or librarians at the library that support the library hours. On the facility side, we also know that we have aging infrastructure throughout the city. So just a very short list, we've got the Monterey Public Library, obviously. We have the, the public safety facility across the street where station, Fire Station Eleven is and the police station. That facility was built, built in the fifties, I believe, and hasn't been renovated since. And they have major issues as well, where there's ongoing flooding in the restrooms. And police officers can't even use the restrooms because there, there are challenges. So we're going through a similar iteration that the Library Board went through on a, with the Group Four study. We're, we're going through that process for the, for the facility across the street and, and there's no dedicated funding for that. We have other needs citywide include the wharf, signals, pavement, ADA ramps, Casavert de Del Monte intersection, Mark Thomas Road, tunnel repair, El Estero Park, North Fremont sewer storm drains. We have roof leaks at Hilltop Park Center. So there's, there's quite a few. I can, the list goes on and on, right, of what are all the city capital needs. The library definitely has a, a place on the priority list as well. The key will be in, in the new year, we'll be having a discussion with our city council about what are the overall needs of all the city facilities. We are excited to be putting together a facility needs assessment that looks at every city facility. You know, many of you know, we have five community centers, we have the library, we have the bookmobile. You know, hats off to, to Brian for all of his work in securing grants for, for the library. That's been so helpful, whether that's the bookmobile or, or other ongoing projects and programs. It's been, we're very, we're very glad to have him as our, as our library director and pleasure to work with on the city manager's office side. You know, that's, that's, that helps us with the funding and help, helps us allocate more resources towards operations or other, or other facilities as well. But the, the long story short here is as we continue to have conversations with council, we will inform not only the library board, but the community as a whole. We also, in the new year, plan to have budget workshops to gather feedback from the community about what are the community's priorities? The, you know, the, the, there's good news and, you know, it's not bad news, but you know, the good news is that we are, our, our budget is, our outlook is cautiously optimistic and continues to be cautiously optimistic. We're not anticipating in the next year or so to have major drops in revenue, but we're also not expected to have major increases in revenue as well. And as many of you know, costs continue to go up for, for services. So how do we strike the balance with the funding that we do have and the fact that we have limited options to generate revenue unless residents come up with a parcel tax, as an example? What, we, we have to balance operational needs in, in capital improvement programs. And this is something that every city has a challenge with, you know, and I spent twelve years in a community that, that, that had a capital improvement program that dedicated a certain percentage of the budget towards capital improvements. And recognizing that as much as we want to increase, build new, new projects, we have to maintain the projects and, or the facilities that we already have. So trying to strike that balance is, is an important piece. There will be some budget sessions, budget workshops that will be announced in the new year and the intent is to have that, those budget town hall meetings in neighborhoods and in communities. So you'll learn more about that in, in January or February. And then separate discussions about facilities as well. So we, I wanted to share that with you. I appreciate the invitation from Chair Joshi to come to, come to the meeting. I was able to clear my calendar a little bit early afternoon to, to be here with you all and happy to answer any questions that you have.
A quick one. Has a TOT made a significant difference? The increase?
The, the TOT, our, you know, our, our hotel tax, transit occupancy tax is strong and that's, and that's, that's helpful. But the costs of operations continue to be high as well. And, and that's one, one of the challenges. TOT goes up, but expenses also go up. We have, you know, very cost of living, you, you all know, is, is expensive to, to, to live here. And that makes it harder and harder to recruit talent in, in our, in our workforce. It's one of the reasons why recently our city council adopted a policy that is special recruitment incentives just for city, for engineers in our community that for a short period of time while we have a hiring recruitment challenge. So yes, TOT is, is, is good, but the, the costs, costs do go up. Can of paint has gone up over three hundred percent in the last two years, for example. And we use a lot of paint, not only for buildings, but also for pavement, crosswalks and, and other improvements. So those are just some examples of, of how high TOT is, is a good sign, but then, but it's, it, it's still, we're seeing occupancy is, is strong on weekends, but our midweek travel, which we rely quite a bit of, of funding on, the, the conference goers isn't a hundred percent back to, to where it was, as, as an example. And that also doesn't just drive hotel tax, but also drives sales tax revenue, which, which, which we rely on. You know, if you look at the top twenty-five sales tax revenue generators, many of them are hotels. And you would think, well, why, why do hotels contribute so much to sales taxes because of the group sales? And every time a conference comes to Monterey, it's fifty dollars for a plate, a lunch plate for a person, and that's, that's sales tax on top of the hotel tax, depending on how many nights they stay. So we're, we're very glad to have partners like the C Monterey, the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau to help, to help support some of those revenue drivers and economic drivers for the city. But yes, to answer your question, TOT's, TOT's been good, but we, sales taxes, very, very small increases. And a lot of it depends on, you know, we still rely a lot on the sales tax from gasoline. So when gas prices go up, it hits us in our, our wallets. But when it goes down, which it has over the last few weeks, it also will hit the city's wallets adversely because gas prices are lower, means we, the city receives less revenue.
Marshall, go ahead.
We receive a fraction. The average here in Monterey County is between, is around eight, eight to nine percent of property tax comes to the city of Monterey. Out of all the agencies, the majority goes to the county, majority goes to education, K through twelve. So we receive a very small percentage of property tax revenue. And as many of you know, because of Prop thirteen, many of the, for, for those of us who were fortunate enough to purchase a house many years ago, you know, I have relatives who've, who've been in their homes since the nineteen forties, since the nineteen fifties, right? Their property tax with Prop thirteen doesn't increase more than one percent a year. So it's, it's a very small percentage. When there's ownership change, yes, there, there is an increase. But again, with Prop thirteen, our property tax revenue increases are very small compared to communities like Brian said, Morgan Hill. You have brand-new neighborhoods being built. And because of that, these, it's a hundred percent of the, the revenue is going to those taxing authorities. Marina is a great example, right? Marina is expanding. Former land that now, now is, how much in property tax are, are these, these folks paying? Even if it's just eight percent, eight percent of, eight percent that is of, you know, a two million dollar house, you know, of, of property tax on a two million dollar house is a lot. That goes to the city of Marina. That's why they're able to expand and, and build new projects. Or in places such as East Garrison, where they have a community services district, that also is supplemental revenue and tax. But on the flip side, those taxpayers are having a hard time paying those additional taxes because there's, there's, on top of property tax, they have a special district assessment for fire services, for example. So this is kind of the, the challenge of how do we, as a community, prioritize our funding? How do we keep the library at the top of mind, but also recognize other needs throughout the city with the limited bucket of, of money that we do have? Anything else?
Yeah. This was not, but part of what we were talking about, that's what Brian was. Part of what we were talking about when we met with Brian was about advocacy for the library because people don't, don't know. So for example, the library is still only open five days a week. A lot of people don't realize that. Or they come and the doors are closed and they, you know, it's like a thump to them. And so, you know, that's part of, part of what we were talking about is what, what are the needs of the library that we need to communicate beyond facilities? Another, another piece that we had talked about was, we have, Brian is doing both the museums and the library and he's doing a wonderful job, but you know, there's only forty hours in a, in a week or twenty-four hours in a day. And originally, there was an, there was an assistant director for the library so that they could handle the day-to-day stuff while he was out doing the museum stuff. We don't have that anymore. And so you've got a person who is doing like triple duty, trying to do all these things. We, for example, have all the teenagers coming from the high school every afternoon. We finally hired somebody, but it's not full-time. And so that person, you know, first of all, it's hard to recruit in this environment when it's not full-time. But the other piece is that, you know, so, so the library is really far was even before the pandemic, even though we had cut back a lot of positions. And I think that that's a message so that when you go to the community and say, what are your priorities? We don't want them to say, well, the library's fine, so let's talk about the sports center. Because the sports center has been out there talking about how they need this and they need that. And the library has not been talking about that. We've been quietly going about our business. And so I think it's, it's like a public education campaign in some sense to say, your library, you know, because the book budgets are smaller, when you try to get a book that you really want to read, your number, what was it? Eighty-three on the list, which is two and a half years, I think, if, if everyone keeps it for three weeks. So, so I think that those were the kinds of messages. So it, you know, the, you know, the facility problem is a big one, but the direct needs are, are small. And I don't think that that's Brian's issue to go out and tell people that, but it, you know, I think the board and the Friends and Foundation can let people know. Just so it's in people's consciousness. So that was all part of this idea about advocacy.
And I think that, that's helpful, helpful feedback. And as we gather input from the community, it's important to be truthful and transparent about these, this is where we are. This, these are, the library has not restored services. And, and this is the, when we look at priorities, the sports center is, is a good example of one where you, you have a number of sports center patrons who have advocated individually. And, but they, they still haven't gone back to the same staffing levels as before. I mean, they're still down, I think, compared to pre-pandemic, five or six full-time, right? So there's, there's certainly a shift and, and there is no, you know, strong number, number two type position as, as they have in the past. Having, having said that, I think this is where we must work together to, to identify, how do we identify, gather that feedback in a way that is, is helpful? And then also the roles of various groups with advocacy, you know, Brian does wear many hats. And, and you know, maybe this advocacy is probably more of an appropriate role for the, the Friends and Foundation of, of the, of the, of the Monterey Public Library. Because the trustees role is, is one example, and the same thing with the, the library director's role is to recommend the budget. You know, you go through the city charter, it's the bylaws, the regulations to provide policy on materials to recommend a budget. But, you know, advocacy isn't, isn't, isn't part of that. But so there is a, you know, and we have a good partner in the, the Friends and Foundation, certainly.
I think, Nat, one of the questions that came up on, from the, from the trustees was regarding what is their appropriate time to talk regarding the budget? So maybe advocacy may not be the right word, but really for them to say, from what I've heard from the trustees over time is that we would like to see additional librarians, or we would like to see this library in position as a full-time in the budget. So where is that appropriate in terms of the presentation? Is that at the budget sessions? Is that at council? What's, is there a specific place for the trustees to have those communications?
I, I think it starts with, and we can, we can talk and, and come back to the, the, the board for, for direction, but I would say it definitely starts with the budget meetings. When we, when we gather feedback from the community about budget priorities, we would like to get input from the entire community, including all of you who are part of.
Well, you got something? Yeah. I've lived in the city of Monterey, I think, for twenty-three or four years now. I don't remember anything coming up for the vote of the city for a parcel tax. I don't know that's ever been attempted within the confines of the city. And yet you say that has been a successful technique elsewhere for getting money in many cases specifically for their local library. So, I mean, I, I don't know why it hasn't been attempted here and I don't see a good reason why it shouldn't be. I, I know what the objections will be. But anyhow, I'm just curious why it hasn't been. But what, what prompted me to wave my finger? But, um, anyhow, I'm just curious why it hasn't been. But what, what, um, prompted me to wave my finger, Arish, was you were talking now about the, um, uh, meetings with the public that you're going to have next year. And you said there for the purpose of, I think I'm quoting you, getting input from the community with regard to not just the library, but I guess the city in general, although I'd like to see him focused a little bit more than that. At first you referred to budget workshops, and then you referred to them as being more like town halls. Now, speaking as Joe average citizen, if I see an announcement for a budget workshop, boy, it sounds like you're going to have me look at numbers and dollars and allocations and all of that. And what do we have a city accounting department for anyway? I mean, a budget workshop, they'll do it. But a town hall, to me as Joe average citizen, that's more for sharing and discussing topics and sharing information and discussing, uh, priorities and stuff. And so I guess I would just, from a personal level, encourage them to be referred to as a town hall meeting to discuss the, um, priorities of the community and the, um, uh, value of things like the library or, uh, parks and things like that. And, um, rather than a budget workshop, uh, cause for the average citizen, I think a budget workshop, there's a small section that would be interested in that. But I think most people would like to express, uh, you know, opinions and feelings and gathering from, receive information. So just, just sort of in a comment of, uh, I guess request advice, whatever you want to call it.
You know, I appreciate that. You know, I'm, I'm really surprised, uh, trustee petty. I, I always find budget workshops to be so exciting and thrilling. It's like doing the Disney plan. But I understand how some people might not be as excited about budget workshops. No, I, I, in serious, all seriousness, uh, Bob, I great feedback because what we are intending to do more yeah, on hall meetings that gather feedback, we also need to be able to frame the conversation and, and share information about here's how our budget works. You know, there are some parts of the city's budget, for example, measure P and measure S are sales tax measures dedicated strictly to street sidewalk storm drains.
Well, you know, as a matter of fact, you could have, I mean, if I were asked to have a hand in designing the, uh, events for gathering input from the community, uh, you know, I'd say, well, let's have these town halls where we gather information and we discuss and we, uh, become aware of priorities from the community frame of reference. Followed maybe by meetings to which the public is invited that are called budget workshops. It sounded like it's more, um, more of a deductive, you know, whenever I for years I taught and I always taught deductively, starting with the general and getting more specific. You know, the upside down triangle like this. And I think getting the notions, ideas, needs, feelings, and then focusing down on, well, okay, what's it going to cost? What's the budget? Going to, uh, need to be in order to get that done and provide that for you. And have that, those be more follow ups to the, um, town halls. And, and if you focus the town halls at all, then I would personally request, and my colleagues can agree or not, that not only should, uh, library staff, but trustees be invited as representatives, not just as average Joe citizens, but as representatives of the library administration, which we are uh, at these town halls. So that the people who would attend from the public know they're talking to those of us that, you know, have been chosen to have some say in, say in the matter. And we're chosen because we've volunteered to do that above and beyond being, you know, the average citizen who comes in and gets a book or attend a program or something. And I could see that as a way of us getting more involved in, I mean, to bring this around to what we were talking about on the agenda today. You know, how's the board can be more, I could see that as a, a vehicle and it would, it would show collaboration between the council, city manager's office and the library staff and administration, you know, all happy or not, one family working together, you know?
In terms of soliciting information, I thought the one that was done for the housing was very well done. You know, we got things in the mail, you could do it online, you would fill it out in the library. It was everywhere. And so it was not difficult to participate if you wanted to. Very nicely done. So something like that. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we do intend to, uh, have an online survey as well. That way it's, uh, and not just for those who can attend in person, but multiple ways to engage and interact, both in person, online, during times that are most convenient to, to our residents.
Yeah, maybe you could schedule town halls for, you know, the first six months of the year and then get more specific with workshops, budget workshops or whatever as a, you know, later. Cause some, to some extent, those would be structured by the, um, input you receive in the more general town halls, I think.
So are you suggesting we have town halls for specific things, a town hall for the library, a town hall for this?
Well, I don't know, uh, the answer to that question. Um, but I mean, I think a town hall for all of city needs would be so huge, you know, it would, it would, it would take all week. Um, and, and I think people who are really interested in the library might not be the same ones that are really interested in potholes. And, you know, and so there needs to be, I think, some degree of focusing. It, how you phrase it or not, it, it could be phrased in terms of activities and interests. And then the library comes up as a provider, a solution, a provider of those, you know? Or it could be just, what do we want the library to be?
And, and to be clear, I think for, because that's for us, we are looking at the budget town halls to focus on citywide priorities. And all the various areas of service delivery. So we can gather feedback on what's most important, what's least important priorities. If we have a budget surplus, where should those funds go to? If we have budget cuts, what areas need to be, should be cut? I mean, we've got to have these, these difficult conversations more globally because if we do town halls focused on certain areas of service delivery, then, uh, it's, it's great. We've, we've brought people together who are champions of the sports center and then champions of, you know, a certain, a certain service. And, but it doesn't help us as a city prioritize the city's budget as a whole. And, and these, these budget town halls will be taking place in the first few months of the year because we are building a budget for the fiscal year that starts July 1 of 24.
Anyone else?
Are you anticipating having them available by Zoom, just like our meeting today is?
Great question. I, uh, will, I'll, I'll make a note of that and, uh,
Despite the dangers of having, um, useless interruptions or inappropriate interruptions, um, it would maybe open the door for participation. It's, you know, risk reward.
Good feedback. Thank you.
Especially if the weather is following.
Yeah, yeah.
Jenny, something? Jim?
No, I'm good.
Brian, something? Go ahead.
I think that, um, now had a, a really interesting insight about this.
About involving the Friends and Foundation in this. And so maybe either Janie or I will go to the next Friends and Foundation meeting and bring up the subject to them. And maybe they'll, um, pass the baton, you know, to a certain extent to them, if it's more appropriate for them to be the advocates.
Well, I think at a town hall, it would be appropriate to have somebody from the board of the friends, speak to provide information about how they work and uh, how challenging it is for them as an auxiliary group to raise funding for the library and inform the rest of the more general public who would be in attendance about how that works. Cause you know, we know it. Cause you know, that's an important, we're here. But I'll bet you the average library user is not as aware.
Right. And I think that the message of Brian, when you were raising the issue about how this is, this was what the budget was, and this is what we spent. Well, that delta is, is what the Friends and Foundation provided to bridge that gap. That's what you're seeing. You're seeing all that money that was raised. Um, and we don't want to fall into the trap of, of them having to raise the money to support the library. A hundred percent. I mean, it, it, they've been doing a wonderful job and we would like them to continue to do that. And if we ever end up with a capital campaign, they can add the bells and whistles to the library, you know, or expand the size or, or do whatever. But we can't shift the burden of making up the gap to, uh, to the Friends and Foundation. And, um, that we gotta, I think they know that and everybody else needs to know that as well. That we don't want to be, we don't want to be penalized for raising the money. So when Brian writes a grant and, and brings in money, we, we don't want somebody to say, well, then they don't need that much. We can cut their budget because they just got a grant, you know? We don't want to use it as supplanting. And in fact, most of the grants say that you can't do that. So we don't want to do that. But I think that getting the Friends and Foundation involved will be a really good thing.
Well, thank you all. It looks like a lot of very useful comments and good discussion. Are there any more items that we want to talk about in this? We all ready for a little?
Well, I think part of, part of the discussion, and this is maybe the town hall part is to really to really raise the question, what does the library mean to the community? You know, I think that people need to think about that. And it's not just what you want from your library, but, but what does it mean to have a library? And, you know, what is the contribution of the library to the, to the community? That's something that.
And from time to time, we need to attend the city council meetings too.
Yeah.
And say something. We, no, I, I don't, I have never attended one, but I didn't know. And this came out when we had that, uh, get together at the Marriott and I talked to the mayor. And I said, well, you need to come to the council meetings and say something. Keep, keep the, uh, library in focus. So.
And if that's not the role of the board, then it can be the role of the Friends and Foundation.
Somebody needs to, we don't, we don't want to inundate them to where they think we are pests, but at the same time, we need to stay in, in, in view.
Right. And so, and so the sense is that we need a consistent message. We need, uh, we need to be speaking from the same voice, all of us, about what it is that we really need and.
Yeah, yeah. So we can put together something in one of the next meetings.
Right. And then strategies for who, you know, how to get out there and talk to people about it.
Would it? I'm speaking to my fellow trustees now. Would it make sense? Given i- if we are unanimous and only if, in needing to provide more input to the city council? Would it not be, fall under our umbrella as administrators of the library? To, uh, have somebody, we could take turns, we could appoint somebody for X number of meetings or whatever of us, I mean, to be responsible for going to the library, uh, going to the council meetings and grabbing however many minutes they give us. Not so much in the general public where you get 90 or 180 seconds to talk about something that's not on the agenda, you know, like with here, but that we have one of us sort of like, he, some people are assigned to attend the friends meetings, right? And, uh, that sort of, but a la that, but to attend the city council meeting and not express a, uh, a point of view or share information from them, from one of us as just an average library user, but as representing the board. And that way we would have to come up with a common, um, a, a, a common amount of information or requests or whatever, uh, as part of what the board is doing. And, you know, so and so from the board is going to go and relay that to the city council. And what Harish just said, it's not the first time I've heard somebody from city council say to somebody on this board, get to our meetings and talk to us.
So.
So we've been in effect, informally asked to do that.
So I can also respond that city council members individually have little meetings. Our, my, my rep goes to Starbucks on, or on Lighthouse Avenue every once a month and sits there and people come and talk to her. And the first time I mentioned the library to her, she said, oh, I haven't heard about the library before. Which is, uh, you know, which is kind of a.
Which Starbucks?
Uh, the Starbucks by the aquarium, you know.
On Lighthouse, you said?
By me, down by Irving, Irving, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lighthouse, that one. And, and she posts on Facebook when she's, or next door, when she's going to do it. So, but, but I think the important, one of the important things is to have some consistent messaging.
That's what I meant. We, we, you know,
We should, we should get.
Say I went to the city council, it wouldn't be Bob Petty, but it would be trustee petty talking and sharing the information that all five of us had agreed we wanted to
Exactly.
Uh, 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 share with the, the council.
So, so we could be saying the same, we need to first of all be consistent. And the second of all, be kind of reinforcing the same message, Friends and Foundation and, and, uh,
Well, sure.
So that's, so that's the message. And then, right. And then strategically we can decide who goes what or whatever. And the Friends and Foundation, I think would be all in.
Well, Ali Ladia was expressed interest in coming to our next meeting to make a presentation like that she did the first time. So we can include her in that discussion for the next, uh, I put that on the agenda item and I will participate. Anybody else she wants to bring along with her? Trying to Diane would be a good person.
And, and maybe e- either you or I or both of us can go to the next, um, foundation meeting, which is mid-January, which is probably before our board meeting and kind of plant the seeds so that they have that.
Not here, but in the parking lot. I'm going to get the particulars of the Starbucks meetings.
I don't know what they, I mean, I don't have them. You have to look on Nextdoor.
Oh, okay. I thought you was a regular.
Find one, I'll let you know. I think it's the fourth Saturday of the month of something. That's our, oh, we're in the same district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One.
So it's, so it's semi-regular.
And I don't know whether the other folks, um,
Yeah.
whether you're, you, you are in.
We have a different one. He's down the block from us.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe he does those as well.
I don't know. I can find out.
Okay. You know, it's a good, it's a good forum. Yes, and maybe Kim, maybe ours moves around. Maybe she's sometimes over by you and sometimes over by else. I don't know. Cause it, District One is big.
Well, there, there are enough Starbucks around. She could go to one down the other, the one at Del Monte or the one at my house. Stay in the same district.
I've walked five minutes without hitting a Starbucks.
Okay, what's next? We're good. Agenda.
Then shall we move on to the next, uh, trustee comments? Are we done with this? Trustee comments, uh, apart from that end and? Marsha?
Um, I, I was, I don't know where I read it, but I was very happy to see that the Friends and Foundation recognized, um, Tim Thompson at their meeting. I thought that was a very, that was a very nice thing because he was very instrumental in helping set up. And I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Only thing I have, same, wishing everybody a happy holiday. Glad to be back. And, uh, looking forward to our next meeting. I think we're on the right track with putting together an advocacy group.
Same. Hope you all, I will be in town. Okay, the next few months.
Wonderful. Well, I attended the, uh, invitation from the council. Marsha was there. I missed the rest of you there. But that is okay. You need a real phone. And it was a lot of fun. The view was beautiful. The company, we met a lot of different people. The view was beautiful, the company, we met a lot of different people. And so I was very happy to attend. So I hope next time the rest of you will find very interesting.
I agree, it would have been between ten years on the Historic Preservation Commission and over ten on this. I've been to a lot of those holiday parties, and they've always been very, very good because you meet people involved with the city, both staff and other volunteers that you don't otherwise. And I guess what I'm hoping in the coming year that we in the city, both council, city manager's office and whatever, Nat has correctly pointed out how the, not only the gross population, but the housing availability and so forth, while getting more expensive, has shrunk. And we hear comments over and over again about how Monterey is already built out. You're not going to have big new developments like in Marina or something. So we need to figure out a way to you know, make more money from how we're using the space that we got, because there is a boundary. It's the city limits. And how can we, how can we make more money? Can you hear that? I can hear it. Richard, I'm in a meeting. I'll call you right back. Oh, I hit the hang up. I didn't hit the answer. Anyhow, I'd like, I'd like to, I hope that we, we, the city and everything can figure out ways to get more income. Because, you know, whether it's remodeling, rebuilding, replenishing programs that had to have been cut to save money when the, the budget was suffering or whatever. But, you know, there, there's a limit to the amount of space that we have, and it needs to be used in the most financially profitable way. So anyhow, other than that, I hope everybody can stay healthy and knock on wood, one of maybe a minority people who have never had COVID.
I know that, Karen, know that.
I drank the water of the holy Ganga, so I'm.
All right. Thank you. See you, everybody, again, if not.
Staff comments?
January.
That's next. Library director may make a brief report.
No, my report's attached. Good. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate all your service and it was nice to see the trustees at the event the other night as well.
Well, after the adjournment, I want to say thank you to everyone in my own special way. So don't go away. Time for adjournment. Do we need a motion for that now? The meeting is good.